It is six thirty seven on Monday, April the eighth two thousand nineteen and we're gonna call the school committee meeting to order. The first thing on our agenda is our consent agenda, which includes our minutes from March twentieth and March twenty fifth. Donations of thirty nine computers and laptops and two warrant articles zero zero fifty nine and sixty. Did everybody get a chance to review these and if so, can can we have a motion to approve?
I have a question. Is the are the computers different new ones than what we had voted on previously?
Yeah, this this is a second batch you you voted I think a month ago on the first batch. This is the second batch, which I told you at the last meeting that they were coming, but they had not arrived yet. They have since arrived, they're in storage, uh, and they'll be deployed this summer at the high school.
Are these laptops or this?
Most of the most of these here, uh, most of the ones, uh, is on this as well as the previous were laptops. So, uh, I know you had a question at the last meeting about, you know, continuing to use donations and, um, they are gonna be, they still will be a significant part of the inventory at the high school and still will play a critical role in the technology at the high school for next year.
Thank you, Dan.
Alright, any other questions?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, thank you.
Second one first? And, uh, Jen second?
Jen second, yep. Any other questions, discussions, and thank you by the way for creating the list of, um, the computers. All good? All in favor to approve, please say aye.
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 Aye. No visitors today. Um, no student representative report either. Alright, let's go into new business. The first item is our superintendent's evaluation. Well, it's not, this is not the evaluation, but we're starting the process. Uh, and I think you sent us your goals. But we're, are we gonna review those today? Was was that the intent?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll turn it to you.
We've, we've been working through some iterations of goals. Um, the very first time, many months ago, um, they were draft, um, and then the decision was to align them to the strategic plan and then in conversation again, it was to also align them with the goals of the school committee for the work of the superintendent. So, what you have, um, is a document that reflects um, in the second row, the four strategic objectives of the strategic plan. And then, um, below that, where I think we might, um, have some conversation, maybe, maybe not, uh, were expectations of the school committee for the work of the superintendent. Um, and then, just as a reminder, to meet the criteria of DESI evaluation, I need to have a district improvement goal, a student learning goal, and a professional practice goal. So I s- in order for me to submit that to the state, I have to submit it in that language, so, um, trying to work those all together. So basically what I did was, um, you'll see, uh, the first two, uh, goals of the strategic plan, I took them a little out of order, but offer innovative and continuous learning experiences and focus on social, emotional, and physical well-being. I categorized with goals of the school committee to radically improve the culture and climate within the district, raise the competency level of the leadership team, and continue to develop and implement the continuum of services to support academic and social, emotional learning needs of students. Um, so in that first column, you have the goals that are associated with all of that, and what I would anticipate would be appropriate superintendent evidence. And then on the right, you have the other two goals of the strategic plan, which are celebrate success and engage community and provide resources to sustain an enriching learning environment, and then a discussion with the school committee, thinking about, again, the role of the superintendent or the goals of the superintendent from the school committee perspective, create a trusting, open, and working relationship amongst various town committees, and improve the Granby School District's reputation within and beyond the town community. And so you see goals under each of those. And again, evidence relative to those, and then a space for you to provide feedback.
Questions, comments? So it is a little different than what what I thought we were gonna get
Okay.
after Friday, and it's primarily, um, around the simplicity of it, you know, how how we can really filter through some of these. So let me ask you this.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, would it be an accurate statement that what you have in that section that says superintendent evidence
Mm-hmm.
would primarily be things that we would look at as our superintendent's activities
Provide, yep.
to lead to those outcomes that you're listing on top?
Yes.
So for our conversations, that section is basically the the like key component in this document? Is that what it is?
I would say first, it's agreement on the goals, that the goals align to the school committee's goals for the superintendent
Okay.
in the district. I think that's the first step, and then, yes, the superintendent evidence, if there was something missing that you would want more, um, detail around or...
Yeah, no, I I hear you.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Um, so the first bar is the str- um, strategic plan, the offer, the four blue ones, and then there's like a gray, and it says radically improve. How would you, like, I guess, define radically? Cause I'm, and part of it comes from just, like, we always have to do SMART goals, so how would you, how is it measurable, attainable, timed out, like,
Right.
radically sounds fantastic, but I don't know how you would how you can pinpoint that out. Do you know what I'm trying to say?
Yes, I do, um, and it was a little bit of a
Maybe it's not that kind of a thing, so, and that's fine.
That was a stretch for me as well, but I think, you know, in trying to combine what the goals for the work of the superintendent are from the school committee's perspective with the the more tangible pieces of the strategic plan, I think, um,
Okay.
to your point, do I have a baseline of culture and climate in the district prior to my arrival? I don't think so. I would have to go and dig, but what I do have are our recent culture and climate surveys of families, um, and adding to that, we could add students and staff.
Okay.
Um, and then at least establish what the current culture and climate is within the district. Um, there are some other reports that I could look at, um, and report out on. The targeted review report, um, talks a little bit about culture and climate. And then I think, you know, to your point, i- is it truly a SMART goal and measurable? Um, no, but I think sharing the story of the improvement in the district is important as well, and I wouldn't wanna lose that, um, because we have made important strides in culture and climate.
And I do think sometimes SMART goals head us in in a different direction than we wanna be. What I mean by that is, you know, this is a conversation we had, improving culture and climate is a hard thing to quantify.
Right.
And yet, it's the most important reason why we brought Cheryl in, right? I mean, that was, that was one of the, that was one of the key deficits in our district.
Right, and just not sure how you would when you s- to me, when you say something will radically improve, how do you?
That's the challenge.
Right.
It's how do you quantify it without just quantifying it for the sake of quantifying it and not being able to actually?
Right, but she
I've seen so many SMART goals out there that are really, at the end of the day, meaningless and
Well, she used it, what I was looking for with, you know, the all the reports that I that I didn't know that existed, like, I know we had talked about the one, but if there's other stuff that's out there, then that's good, just you, to me, I I don't think any goal you should can just throw out there that you can't have some kind of measure.
Well, that's, that's, that's what we need to figure out together as a group, is how can we, how can we measure, how can we measure it in a in a meaningful way?
So I'm trying to do a few things. Um, one is you, I I actually like the essence of your goals, and from my perspective, almost anything can be by proxy or directly be quantified. Uh, but how do we really get to the point, uh, where the quantification makes sense and it's easy to achieve?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, cause you know, that, what what Deanne said, that there are some SMART goals that are, you know, that that don't mean anything, that means they're not smart. That's, that's what it is, and what you're saying that, you know, if we, you know, if we can't really measure what we're looking for, then
Right.
uh, we're gonna, we're gonna have certain other conversations.
Which are basically two extremes. Right, we're at two extremes, so it's all the gray area in the middle that we're trying to come up with.
Um, but but more importantly, I I told you this, uh, last time we spoke as well, that I I like seeing all these things all together. They have a purpose and meaning, each one of them. District improvement, uh, plan has its own, uh, purpose, student learning goals, they have their own, uh, professional practice goals, are your, you know, your personal
Right.
professional, they they all ha- they all contribute to to, uh, how well you perform in your role or you would perform, you will perform in your role, you know, when all these things come together, right? And what I'm trying to understand is actually what both Jen and, uh, Deanne were saying. Those three bullets and two bullets on the right-hand side that put there as your goals, I don't know that they directly align with a lot of things below them, even though, uh, you know, they there are meaningful, purposeful there. If that is the case, if we agree that we like those, in essence, because culture is important to us, then how do we get closer to what, uh, Jen was saying? That if we're gonna, you know, say radical, what does it mean? Uh, does it mean that, you know, we're gonna create the stretch goal with this huge percentage of s- of change and something, whatever that something may be? The the way it, the way it is here, I don't know that we can really quantify and we can measure those bullets that you put in that gray section.
Okay.
Well, I mean, yeah, I I agree, and this is just, like Cheryl said, this is just the first iteration with all of us, so yeah, I mean, that was my, I mean, I'm the wor- I'm the one that said radically, and that was just a working, that was just for example, you know, that was just like
Right, yep.
for very first iteration.
So we need to do some problem solving about the warnings.
Exactly, so Cheryl was coming here with this document thinking that this is gonna be the finalized document. This is just, this is a template.
Yeah.
And it's, okay, so how do we, how do we take it to the next level then? How do we make sense of it? Cause I think the draft itself is closer to what we've been talking about, you know? With the, um, you know, for example, the seventy percent of all students in grade levels will meet expect, I mean, yes, we need to have that.
Right.
But how do we, uh, build relationships with the select board and and the finance committee and, you know, and how do you quantify that?
Mm-hmm.
But but those are really important goals.
Right.
One one last thing. This is my personal opinion about any one of these performance evaluations and all that. Because certain elements of these evaluations remain so ambiguous that we don't really know what to share, what would really show these huge success, what would w- we tend to, we tend to add a lot of stuff in here. Um, I think we're trying to do two things. One is really get a summary version of these things so we can have a good conversation around that. Two, take those and, uh, um, hea- help them lead us to a good conversation around the annual performance evaluation. We don't necessarily have to look at every single one of these, because I'm sure some of those will, uh, will come up during our conversations anyway, but it, they don't necessarily have to be there for us to evaluate and say, you know, we improved on this and that. And I'm not saying that because I don't like it. Again, I really, you know, personally, I have no problem with it, but when it comes to really having a good, quick, simple conversation that will be meaningful around, uh, you know, around y- your your, uh, performance and evaluation, um, we can't, we can make it easier on us, on ourselves. I think that's the circle that we've found ourselves in the last few years, especially since that new template came up, uh, or the state put it out. Um, we we can make it easier. We can, we can have, you know, you can have three bullets and three bullets and something measurable, you know, how you're gonna be measuring. There are some some things here that, for instance, indirectly relate to you, because, you know, they're related to the schools and stuff, but maybe we can just filter it down to a few things where there's an action and there is an outcome, that is all Cheryl, and then we have a conversation around that. I mean, i- if all these things are not here, it doesn't, it doesn't mean that they don't exist or they did not happen.
Mm-hmm.
There, I mean, th- we know that they are there. How do we really make the conversation a little simpler by reducing it to fewer items?
So if that's the case, then we should all agree on what those few items are going to be as a group.
Alright, I mean, that's, that's there.
So so we don't keep putting it back on Cheryl to say, you know, go work this out and then bring it to us, and then we critique it and keep sending you back to do more work. I I think we need to do this as a group, so that, you know, she has a clearer idea of of how to do it.
Yeah, no, that's, that's fair.
And, you know, the other thing to keep in mind is, we're all coming, we're all coming to this from very different lenses.
Yes.
I'm not a business person, and you know, this is not a business environment, and yet I see where SMART goals, um, make sense to a point. So I just am throwing that out there. We're coming, we're all coming at this from very different lenses. So I have my perspective, you have yours, you know, you have yours, Mike has his, you know, and somehow we have to find some common ground so that Cheryl doesn't feel like she's reinventing the wheel.
No, I understand what you're saying, but let's just take one one of them, right? Radically improve the culture and climate within the district. How how would I know that is the case? Either I, we can say, hey, you know what, things feel good and we can have a conversation. I mean, you know, I I've actually, I've I've heard, seen conversations like that, uh, even in business environments sometimes. So is it feel, is it, do we know? You know, is it feel, no, feel no. Um, but who 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 would be, who would be the right source to tell us about that?
I pick Robin.
No, that's not
Well, I I do think, I think that's more of an internal, uh, uh, quantifier. It's it's teachers, it's
Students.
it's parents, it's, um, you know, it's yeah, I mean, within the district, that's, that's, that I think is is a, is a pretty good assumption to make.
And, you know, raise competency level of leadership team. I'm sure you have some things in mind.
I actually have a survey that measures that, believe it or not.
Yeah, and and that's more, you know, um, say, s- the special ed director, you know, um, how do people working for the special ed director feel? You know, how, how do they, do they, do they have the leadership that they need in order to do their jobs? So, you know, it's people who work for the the leadership team. Um, and some of those areas that we've been wanting to improve, that we know of for sure, Emery, since we've been here. So I think, you know, if you're looking at the principals or, I mean, there's certainly ways to to evaluate, again, looking at parents, how do parents feel about about how the schools are run?
So let me ask this question. What do you think about those five bullets? And what other suggestions do you have?
So I tend to agree, um, some of them, like that first one, would be hard to, um, look at now. Um, some of it, I think, we might have done better if we had, and maybe you still haven't, but some some assessments or some things from before that we can then take another thing now and kind of match them up and see, you know, how they look, what changed. If it cha- cha- changed the way we wanted it to, then that's a score, you know, or win, right? I mean, but I d- I don't know if we have that still.
Mm-hmm.
And that would, that would be like the first one. You know, what did it look like last, like, you know, last ba- the last time, and what does it look like now? Well, that's, you know, the those answers.
I have the, um, parent survey, uh, that went out at the end of the year last year, and it would go out this year, so there's that data. I'd have to think about, um, the teachers. I'd have to go back and look and see what I sent teachers. I'm pretty sure I sent teachers something as well.
So I will throw something, um, different out there. It may go back to what, uh, Deanne was saying, that, you know, w- we're asking for SMART goals because it makes it easier, more specific, measurable, and all that stuff, right? But if, if we were to say that, or if we came to an agreement that there was a survey for teachers and parents and students that was meaningful and with the data that we collect, we are doing something, that by itself actually would be, uh, to me, a a sign of success. Because I don't know that we really reach out to all of our stakeholders, you know, uh, especially students, when we really would like to hear from them, what they're thinking about their own environment, their school, and get that kind of information. We talk about it, but we, you know, I don't know that we successfully did that. So that kind of change, it didn't exist, we really thought it was important, and we'll put it in place. Uh, as, um, uh, Mike was saying, because there is no baseline, you may not be able to compare, but at least the very fact that we put something in place or you put something in place that is now going to allow everyone to see, uh, what people are thinking, the students are thinking, teacher are thinking, parents are thinking, communities thinking, and then allow us to make improvements based on that, I think that's, that's radical.
You may be able to get up a little bit by asking some things of certain ways, like, you know, what was it like last year as compared to now? But again, I think it's better when you do that year after year, because, you know, people will, you know, answer they'll think a little bit differently, you know, the next year, it's like, oh, I think it was works last year or they're the same, right?
Well, and we, and i- we do have to start somewhere.
Mm-hmm.
Right? Because to me, um, culture and climate is not important only this year. It's gonna be important next year and the year after that, and the year after that, so, you know, you have to start your baseline somewhere. And the same thing with developing a working relationship with, you know, other committees in town. It's not something that we've ever surveyed, but we know what the relationship is like currently and what it was like four years ago.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
I would probably even make that an annual one too, just simply because what's gonna ever hurt, right?
Well, I think that's, that's, that's the reason why it's on here is, if if it's not on here, to me, it's I don't know, y- y- it's it's like the, it's like the strategic plan. You wanna keep it there right in front of you all the time. You wanna be assessing it.
So I'm reading the five bullets. Um, here's what I'm thinking. As I look at those five bullets, I feel like you are touching on probably the most important elements. It it is high level, so, y- you know, the the district and then, uh, leadership team, you're talking about students. Um, there is, I don't see anything specific about teachers. Um, you're talking about the community, uh, on that fourth bullet, on, you know, the first one on the right-hand side, and then you're talking about how well the district is known overall, the reputation of one. So my suggestion would be, and I'm just gonna turn it to you guys after that, uh, if that third bullet about the student achievement, the, uh, continue to develop a continuum of, uh, services, if that were split in two, one focusing on academics, the other one focusing on social, emotional side, and then if there was one more bullet focusing on, uh, our educators, you know, uh, teachers, folks in the, uh, in our district, I think that would cover pretty much e- everyone, right? Am I missing anybody?
Mm-mm. I do think that no more than six is the way to go. Cause if 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 we start going I don't know, first of all, six is a nice even number.
Maybe seven.
No, no, I think, I think a lot of these can be wrapped up in kind of like one big, uh
I'd just like to say that when I started, it was like eight pages, so it really got whittled down.
Yes.
Well, when you change the font to four, size four.
Yeah, I know. I was trying to get it to two pages, I was like, ooh, nine is a little small.
And I was like, are you kidding me?
I was able to get it up to ten.
But I I bet it felt, it, this feels more doable to you.
It wa- it's definitely more, um, targeted.
Yeah.
A lot of the extraneous language and, you know, um, trying to get down to the meat and potatoes of the work.
Right. Alright, so, seven?
No, I'm just, I was, I was kidding. If it's seven, seven, six is good too, I don't
So if I heard you correctly, there would be actually five bullets on the left-hand side and two on the right.
There will be four bullets on the left-hand side and three bullets on the other side.
So the teacher adding to the supportive teachers would be?
Oh, I, okay, just few, I I see where you're wrong with that. Yes, five and two, is that what, okay.
Why did I make it even four and four?
Yeah, I was just putting things on, but I don't wanna, I don't wanna commit to that yet before we hear from, uh, Jen and Mike. And Deanne, if you have anything else, I don't know if I
Um, well, clearly, I think the word radically needs to come out, just based on the conversation tonight. And I do like the idea of splitting those up, uh, that that third bullet to the academic, and then another one for the social, emotional. Seeing as we're so focused on the social, emotional, it seems like it makes sense.
Instead of adding a whole new one, could we add the teacher part in in the competency level of the leadership team and comma and educators? Like, could, or is that too completely diff- like, if we wanted to have something around the teachers, would it be the same sort of thing that you're, I mean, I feel like that's what you're driving at, so it could be almost like a semicolon and educators and the support staff or how however, whatever it else, you know, so then it's not, you're adding more meat to it, but it's not a whole nother bullet? I don't know. I'm not very good at this.
No, so if the focus is gonna be on competency?
Yes, of the of the district staff, really, all around.
Right, right. You could just do that.
Cause I would, I would expect that, you know, anything about whether or not our teachers are finding joy in their work, joy in the district, that would be part of the first bullet, right? The culture. If the culture is nurturing, then everybody would tell us that, you know, they're happy with certain things. If not, they would let us know what those things are. Yeah, I actually, yeah, we can probably do that then, if
Makes a lot of sense.
Yep.
Or even just like what you said, ju- district staff, that's all encompassing, right? So
Mm-hmm.
it covers all of the people then, instead of just leadership team, when you're, then when you're going through, you've got, you've got your I'll call them supporting bullets for lack of a better word at this point in in my day.
Yeah.
That kind of goes around all that. You talk about the leadership team, you're talking about, you know, um, union leadership and things, so it seems like you're kind of hitting on them and below, and so that high-level one that's guiding you covers it, maybe? I don't know.
I I like that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I also agree that, you know, radically, especially if we're talking about continuous improvement, you know, we're we're not just talking about changing everything all at once, so probably, it it aligns with our thinking, but it seems to me that that second bullet is the m- most difficult to to, uh, measure, because if we're gonna talk about competency levels, we have to define what that means, how you're measuring that, what, you know, the do you have a matrix that really determines that, or any other types of measurement that gets you there, since, especially since we're adding, uh, our educators in there as well?
So, um So, um, no, currently. But the interface of the assessment system with the ILTs would create that expectation collaboratively about what high quality instruction looks like in classrooms, so that work's happening now. And then we would have the results of learning walks um at the school level, but also district-based learning walks with the admin, and then we would have the results of the data and all of those would then tie together to give evidence that that professional development, um collaborative problem solving, looking at student work, all of those things that we're training teachers on how to do effectively is actually having an impact in teaching and learning in the classroom.
Yeah.
So it's, you know, w- we're at the beginning stages of it in terms of developing an assessment system, you know, training teachers on using data effectively at grade level meetings to determine, you know, and just ask the question and take the risk with each other about why is it that your students are doing better on this standard than my students? Um, let's talk about what those lessons looked like. Um, you know, that's where we're starting there, but within the next two and three years, you're exactly right, we would be able to equate all of the survey data, all of our learning walk data, all of our teacher reflections, um everything we're seeing in classrooms into student achievement.
So did we give you anything that
Absolutely.
is actionable, or did we confuse it even more?
Mm-hmm. Nope, I, no, I think it's, I think it's very good.
Okay. So, anything else?
Is there any, anything else that seems ambiguous or unclear or? Cause we are, you know, we're trying to simplify, right?
I know.
For all of us.
Well, when you look at the sixty-page pager rubric that the DESI puts out, this is.
Yeah, we don't want that.
So given that those will be your goals, I'm assuming you're gonna have maybe a couple of objectives that will follow and then something that will relate to their measurement, right? Cause all by itself, just that long bullet may not may not be uh easy, if at all possible, to translate into some action that you can measure.
Mm-hmm.
So is it, i- i- the way I'm thinking, if those are goals, then you're gonna have some objectives that you know, maybe two, three, four each, and then you're gonna have some measurement for that. Cause I don't know how you can measure uh
Right.
these directly, and you know, you're gonna do something and that something will lead to some measurement, that's what I'm trying to say, I guess, right? We just talked about the surveys, we talked about um competency level, determining what it what that means, so there is that middle step and then the measurement step. The challenge is gonna be, and we don't really have to get to it probably this year, because since, you know, as you said, we're just starting to think in these terms uh for evaluation purposes. At least let's just create that baseline and have the best conversation that we can have uh with something that makes sense and aligns with uh our strategies.
Mm-hmm.
And then, you know, we can make improvements uh as we go forward.
I have um one other suggestion. On the evidence part, you have collaboration between school department and other town departments. And I'm wondering if that can be maybe a bit more detailed, cause I, you know, I know that we put out a um calendar. You know, for me, for me, for example, if that calendar was a was adhered to.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and these meetings were taking place, that that to me is the evidence. But collaboration between school department and another town department seems a bit general.
Yep.
So I don't know what you would use as a measurement, but um.
Yeah, I think I would probably, you know, to Emery's point, I would break out the remaining pages differently around evidence and how each of the goals is supported specifically by evidence and measured. I didn't go that deep
Yeah.
because we were just starting the conversation. I just sort of gave some examples of what might super, what evidence might look like.
Yeah. To to be a little facetious, I think the evidence part of this whole thing was because deep inside, everybody knew that we were not gonna get to smart goals, you know, or measurable goals all the time. So evidence is basically, hey, you know, here's some evidence, uh let's just look at it, then that should more or less give us some idea whether or not those goals are achieved or we're getting close to it. Um, because evid- you know, if you have evidence and then you have measurements, I personally would go and look at the measurements. Why would I sit through, you know, a catalog of, you know, of of readings, right? Just I would look at, okay, how how did we do on each one of these? Some of the elements that you have in evidence, that would be good to see, but I don't, I don't think all of them will be relevant necessarily to all this stuff, the goals that you have in there, you know, school enrollment and um, I don't know, some documentation, the print documentation and social media documentation. So there there is, there is potentially a way to save on those pieces of evidence as well, if we can find the right way to measure the goals and
Right.
the objectives that will stem from those.
I agree.
Well, y- just thinking as you say that, when you wanna measure social media outreach and its effectiveness, that can be a survey question at the end of the year.
Mm-hmm.
Do you feel the social media outreach is sufficient? Would you rather see more? Would you rather see a different kind? Um, and you can get some good data, you know,
Yeah.
based on that.
And that's gonna end up touching on a lot of the different stuff that you're talking about.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, a meaningful survey could cover so much.
If we get participation.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, there there are a lot of ways that, uh you know, once we get a little bit more savvy with our social media systems, there's so many different ways that we can reach people. You know, and just keep like, alright, come on, you haven't sent your survey back, you know, send your certi- or, you know, we know how many students and parents are in the district.
We can have a contest between the two schools.
Yes, exactly.
You can make it fun.
Yeah.
We're good? Okay.
Go back to the drawing board.
You're you're good. Okay, alright.
Sort of, but not really.
We've been revising.
Yeah.
Drilling too.
Drilling, not an overhaul.
Drilling.
Or 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 revision.
Yes.
Revisions are good.
So next we have the job descriptions for the two positions.
Yes. So, um.
Did you wanna walk us through one? Number two, did you see the comments that I?
I did not.
Left, okay. So I I still struggle sometimes with uh Google Docs because I did not realize that it creates a separate copy. I thought it was leaving everything on that single copy.
Yes.
So anything that says my name next to it, those are the two that I worked on.
Which one are we on?
I don't see.
Um, the first one is the district data manager.
I don't see anything with your name next to it.
I do.
You've seen it.
Well, i- in my case, it says me.
Right.
So.
Oh, actually in the Google Docs. I thought it was gonna be saved.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah. So there's one version that Cheryl put out there, that's the original, and then I edited one.
So you wanna use the one that that you updated, or that you asked your question?
It's it's the same thing as the one Cheryl updated with c- my comments.
I actually don't have the comments.
You have four of them?
Nope, I only have two. I have district data manager, Granby dot doc, and then the Word document. It's at district data manager, Granby.
I see Cheryl and Diane in there.
I'm in here, in yours, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
And Adam, let's get out. Huh? And Adam hiding there.
I'm in there. What's my, what do I look like?
So we can, we can go through, whichever version you go through.
How do you see that? How do you know who's where?
Up in the very top, there's little circles.
Can you send it to me again? Cause I I do not have it. I only have the original one.
I see Emery, I see Cheryl, I see Adam, I don't, I don't see me.
No, yeah, I see you, but I don't see Jen, so.
Okay.
Can I send a link? Jen?
I don't know.
I believe so.
Yeah, I don't, I don't either.
I don't know why I'm not in that shared version. It didn't get sent to me.
Ha, I have, that wouldn't make sense though, right?
Well, that's what I'm saying, I mean.
Jen, I just tried sharing it with you again. Oh, you did?
Yeah.
So I need to go out and come back in, you think?
Um.
I would, only because it may.
Or sign into your email and you be, you should be able to get the link that way.
So if you have a- any version, I can, I don't have a lot of comments or changes. The my, uh let me put it this way, I have comments, not edits, so it's easy really to for me to walk you through, walk everybody through.
Do you see me now?
Yes.
Yay.
You're orange.
Well, come on, on the board.
I love orange.
So the, do you want me to? So the first job goal, it says something like demonstrated ability to work. I don't know, I'm not sure that that's the job goal, right? So we should change it. I don't know what that would be.
Uh basically to um support uh data managing, uh data management within the district in all capacities listed, so DESI reporting, teacher, uh formative assessment, a- all of that.
So I'm assuming that this template came from somewhere, right?
Um, it's a combination of uh what we had developed prior, um and other districts, uh yes, a combination.
So the second thing that I have here is just a suggestion and question. You know, we have a list of different uh software and um.
Yep, can we add Tableau?
Yeah, can we have something like Tableau if this person's gonna play with data?
Mm-hmm. Yep. Mm-hmm.
I mean, it doesn't have to be Tableau, but Tableau is the most common and most popular right now, so it's it's easier. Uh, and it would really do a couple of things for us, because we did not get the okay to uh seek that grant, remember last year? That's all Tableau-based dashboard, so we could do that in-house and even do more than that. Um, the third comment is, there's something that says assist
Mm-hmm.
uh under duties, but it's not clear assist who. Uh, since this is gonna go out there, um, you know, is it everybody or just one person that they're reporting to that would be good to clarify?
Yep, they do report to David, um, but they would need to assist.
When you say they, are we talking more than one person now?
Person, no. It's neither a he nor a she, so I use they.
Oh, okay, alright, so you're going gender neutral, okay. Yep.
Cause he, she just gets a little. So anyway, um, assist in maintaining, yes, uh so reporting to David, but also to the building principals, to the ILTs, to myself, to David, so um really assisting everyone, it's really a, um.
Okay.
It isn't, uh, you know, we go through a chain of command to sort of get to this person, it's, these are the.
Right, that was just
Yeah.
Out of curiosity, the third uh item there, facilitate the articulation, I think communication probably makes more sense there.
Mm-hmm.
Um, assist in managing DESI security portal, is that?
It is only DESI, mm-hmm.
Is that our?
The security, no, it's DESI's security portal, so when we go, there's certain criteria that um need to be updated with DESI, um David right now is doing that work. He updates our credentials, um and manages the DESI, the conversation between our data in the Granby's public schools and what gets uploaded into the security portal. And that has to be um really looked at with a fine-tooth comb and a magnifying glass and everything you can to make sure that it's accurate.
Okay. So everything related to us, though, it's not, I just didn't know whether it's, th- these are things that are clear, it may be all clear and I'm, because I don't know these things, it's possible that I'm uh getting into the nitty gritty, but when it says assist in managing DESI security portal, it sounded as if they were gonna do something for the state. So I understand what you're saying. Uh, there is a word that was scratched out, but it was still there, just removing that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, there is apparently an S somewhere that we need to add or not. Oh, there was an S, oh, ten, number ten. Everything is, says assist developed, that one said assists. Um, support superintendent principals and supervisors to identify strengths, areas for improvement in order to inform decision making. So my note says unclear where the strengths and opportunities are to be identified. Is this related to data analysis?
Right, so
What what are the strengths related to?
what we're trying to do is, is to improve the leadership team's use of data in decision making. Um, our data is pretty much all over the place right now, um, and so we're doing a lot of work individually, going to the security portal ourselves, going to radar, going to DART, going to all of these sites, and a data manager could pull those reports for us so that when we're at a leadership team meeting, the reports are already there for us and generated, and then we're talking about the data instead of spending all of this individual time, um, trying to figure that, figure that out.
Okay. And by the way, everybody understands that I just thought that needs more clarification than we don't have to.
No, this is sort of like a foreign language to me, so I'm just, you know.
Como?
Yeah.
So that's identifying strengths and areas of improvement in our data structure, or is that what it is?
Um, I guess we would reword that to say, um, develop effective data systems to support stu- superintendent principal supervising in identifying strengths, areas for improvement in order to inform, inform decision making.
Alright, uh and I think the last one, maybe, is seventeen responsible for school choice reimbursement claim. And this may be clear to you guys, but is it preparing it, processing it, submitting it, all of it?
It's working with, uh, it's working with pupil services to make sure that it's accurate.
Okay. Okay, so validating the data
Yes.
that is in there, okay.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Everybody is good otherwise, or? Okay. Um, do you have any questions, or did you have anything else?
No.
So if we go to the next one, the coordinator position.
I I have one question on this.
Yeah.
Do you anticipate um a problem finding somebody with a bachelor's degree and that's why you put that other sentence in there?
Yes.
Minimum associates? You do anticipate a problem?
Uh, I don't wanna disqualify someone who may have good experience or an associate's degree and by withholding a a bachelor's, um. It's a type of position that, um, they may have strong experience, um, and they may not have pursued a college degree, um, so.
Okay, I just didn't know if you were putting that in there in advance of.
No, I I think, it, like I said, it's a technical position, so you may have somebody that came out of technical school, you may have somebody that had good experience and was mentored well, um, you know, it's, it's just hard to say.
Gotcha.
Good. All good?
Mm-hmm, mhm.
Okay. So going to the um next one, the curriculum and technology integration coordinator. Uh, I, uh, I think we briefly talked about this before. We seem to have used the terms or the titles director and coordinator, coordinator interchangeably, so we are posting for coordinator position.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, looks like I don't have, well, actually I do. I don't have as many, I was gonna say, but, uh, under two, the assessment section, it says promote, promote valid and uniform teacher testing of students.
Sure.
What what does that mean?
So in both our high stakes MCAS testing and the MAP testing, um, you wanna make sure that the testing environment is uniform uh throughout the district, so that means providing the training that's required through, by MCAS, but also making sure that teachers are using uh the MAP assessment system uh in standardized ways.
Okay. Just occurred to me, I'll ask, uh, no, completely separate question, do we anticipate that a good chunk of this individual's time will likely be spent on standardized testing-related stuff? No? Okay, good, I like that.
Mm-mm. Mm-hmm.
Uh, my next question comment was in, uh, Uh, my next question comment was in uh section four, special programs. It says supervises and collaborates with director of people services, uh, the following programs, so. It it really didn't sound right because this person will not supervise the director of people services, so my suggestion was to reword it to say collaborates with the director of people services to supervise the following programs.
Okay. Yep. Mm-hmm.
Is that the intent?
That's fine, yep.
Okay. Uh, in five related to grants. Uh, searches for and advises administrators and staff to search for sources.
Yep. Yep.
So rewarding, you know, searches for grant opportunities and advises the administrators and staff on potential sources of grant, whatever the short version of that might be.
Grants, yeah. Mm-hmm.
Uh, evaluates fulfillment of objectives of grants. So my question out of curiosity was, is this before we apply for grants that we are qualified for it or is this after we get the grant?
Uh, nope, so typically when you receive a grant, uh, there is an evaluation procedure that you have to demonstrate that you've fulfilled all of the objectives of the grant. And so this person would be in charge of that.
And I actually like the fact that there's a s- separate section for grants with five bullets under it, you know, specifying some good tasks. Um, and as far as education and experience, you know, master's degree, advanced degree and all that, but somebody who will be doing this, would we not want to have some past experience in a similar role that they, you know, training, education is great.
Mm-hmm.
But if they did not have hands-on experience in something like this, would we not want to have that?
So what I would say is, um. There are often positions in larger districts where teachers are part of curriculum work groups. Um, they may be department chairs that have a heavy dose of curriculum, writing and alignment embedded in their job position um or job description, so I wouldn't necessarily say that someone would have to have been a prior curriculum coordinator or technology integration coordinator, but that their experience would demonstrate that they had the knowledge and skill set.
Right, and that's that's what I'm trying to get to, it doesn't have to be the same role, but anything that will really prepare them for something like this.
So you want that expand, yeah. Right. Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
So you might foresee maybe a teacher who doesn't necessarily wanna teach anymore? And moving into a position like this?
Yeah, or a teacher that sees a different, you know, a different path for them.
Right.
For example, yeah.
Right. But obviously that different path, you wouldn't be teaching anymore.
Right, I mean, in some districts, um, there are instructional coaches um that have part of their day's instructional coaching, so they're working with teachers, they're writing curriculum with teachers and then part of their day is still in the classroom. That person who has an experience of instructional coaching, of looking at data, at integrating technology with teachers, that's a person that I would be interested in. But would not have had the title of director of curriculum or coordinator of curriculum, but would have had the experience of doing the work.
Good. And my last comment on one word choice and other skills and abilities.
Visually. Mm-hmm.
So if we can change that to visually.
Mm-hmm.
That's all I had, anyone else?
Um, no. I didn't.
Mike laughed at me.
I read it and went right through it, didn't catch half the stuff you got.
No, the only thing that I caught, I think I caught one thing and it was the supervisors and I was like, hmm. Yeah.
Alright.
Devils in the details, right?
Yeah.
That's why we have you, Emery.
I don't know if you were calling me names or. So are we, are we all good with this one too? Okay. Um, alright, there was no vote or anything really for these. So with that, moving to all business and the review of the final draft of our F Y twenty budget. Okay. So let me start with this, Adam, just, I I saw that there there was some good exchange of emails.
Yeah, yep.
Um. I I really enjoyed uh the fact that there were questions, answers, suggestions, remarks, notes, warnings and all that stuff, which is all good.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yep.
Are they all resolved that we can call this the final draft now?
Yes, um.
Especially, you know, the the one that, um, Chris, I believe, highlighted as far as the surplus.
Yes, yep, yep.
For in one fiscal year and not being able to use, yeah.
Yep, which which I totally understand that, um, but in our
Yeah.
in our effort to be fully transparent, we wanted to identify that we're projecting a surplus and that we were planning on using that surplus
Right.
prior to June thirty, maybe to offset some of what we have in the F Y twenty budget.
Okay, which would be things like, you know, if we're gonna do one-on-one, you would probably.
Exactly, exactly.
Alright, that's that's.
Exactly, so Chris then followed up and still kind of repeated the same sentiment that we we shouldn't be using that money to pre-buy things for F Y twenty, so we'll we'll um we'll make that work, but it was just our effort trying to be transparent, let them know like, you know, we are tracking a surplus and we plan on using that surplus to get a jump on some things for next year, but we'll we'll, we will take care of that.
Yeah. So I guess, you know, what you just said right now, are we all on the same page as to what can and cannot be done with that amount so that we can
Mm-hmm.
make adjustments if we have to?
Yes, yes. Yep.
So we are on the same page, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm. Um, and there was a couple of other things that, um, I have to send him s- just some details surrounding um some supplies for the high school in East Meadow. Right now it's just a plug in the budget, um, but he wants some details which we can easily, um, get him, I didn't focus really on that because the other questions that I responded to were a little more important and a little more time sensitive, so I figured I'd I'd get those to him first.
Yeah.
Um, but I believe other than getting him some details around some line items, I think we're, um, I think we are good.
Okay.
I don't wanna, I think, I think we're we are good.
Alright, and I have one um more quick question.
Mm-hmm.
The offset, was it a little different the last time we saw the offset?
It could.
It was one eight something.
Yeah, so then, um, actually one of the first exchanges email, um, first email exchanges, Chris had caught that we had a duplicate of, um, employee there, so I reduced that, there, yeah, there were some some reductions that we made, um.
Oh, okay, that's what it's.
We had seven thousand dollars in for a late bus, which was for an after-school program, um, and he suggested that we move that to the transportation more, so, um.
Which makes sense.
Yep, I did that, so yeah, there, it's reduced, um, based on some findings on on his end, which is also another good reason that we have him look at it and
Yeah.
and catch those things, so, I mean, I told him I appreciated it and thanked him for, um.
No, those are all good questions, questions that the finance committee uh sent back, those were good.
Catching some of those, yeah, yep. Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
So.
So as of the the, that's why this budget's in here a little late, but this was as of this afternoon, probably two or three o'clock this afternoon, once I finished getting uh responses to him and kind of cleaned it up a little bit, this is the most, um, up-to-date budget, um, I added a tab that kind of outlines our offsets, the amount and actually what, um, fund will be offsetting the budget uh per Chris's, um, request, so I just included that in the in the template. So this is the most up-to-date budget, um, that everybody has, I I did send it to Chris and John was on that email and I believe the rest of the select board, so everyone should have this version of the budget, um, as of today.
Okay.
So this is an example of a well-functioning town, right?
Yeah.
That you have support in other folks, whether it's FinCom, Select Board, Chris.
Yeah.
Right, so that when you send this information and they come back with questions, you know, you're either saying, oh, well, here's here's why this is.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
Or, oh, thank you for that.
Yeah.
I, we miss that.
Mm-hmm. And I've said that, man, I I mean, I stared at that budget, we stared at that budget, I think me a little more probably than anybody else, eight, nine hours a day, so I'm I'm gonna say there's probably gonna be some mistakes or duplications or something in there, so I I I don't mind anyone taking a look at it, so.
Well, it's the town.
Right.
Right?
Yeah, so it was it was.
I mean, it's, this is how I imagined
Mm-hmm.
the town working together when we say everybody's working together.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Yeah, honestly, it was educational too, I, you know, based on those questions, I I learned uh some stuff.
Yep. Mm-hmm. And and based on those questions that I, you know, kind of opened my eyes somewhat to do things a little differently or be a little more detailed or, you know, cause it's, even though I'm looking at it or we're looking at it all the time and we know what it is. Yep. Not everybody else does, um, so it was just, yeah, it was it was certainly, um, good feedback and and good conversation.
Yep. But a- and it can be very simple, right, the three oh five, seven ninety-seven, I always thought it was three oh five.
Mm-hmm. Right.
And then I think in all conversations, it was always three oh five, three oh five, and there's a
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. And the the minimum local contribution, I I think we plugged that number in probably two or three months ago and I never looked at it again.
There's an extra in there.
Probably transposed the number and and didn't even look at it, so a- again, another, another good catch, so.
Do we know whether there will be anything coming from the rural uh side for F Y twenty?
Um, I'm actually in Boston tomorrow, uh, for a second round of hearings, uh, with the education subcommittee.
Okay.
Um, not only are we advocating for uh rural schools, uh, support sparsity aid. Um, as you know, Granby falls into tier three, we're not quite rural enough to see a substantial improvement, um, in allocation. Um, there's a second, um, uh, group forming around small schools and small school districts. Um, so that's the second hearing, uh, tomorrow afternoon at two o'clock, if anybody wants to go down to Boston. Um, and we will be advocating for a, uh, LEAF, um, low enrollment, uh, allocation uh for school districts with very low or declining enrollment, um, and the fact that, uh, we may not be rural. Um, and therefore we're not gonna qualify for substantial rural schools coalition money or sparsity aid. Um, but we do have the same increased cost relative to salary, relative to, um, special education, healthcare. And we're not seeing the increment in the foundation budget formula review committee's work. Um, all we're seeing is minimum aid, so we're trying to increase the amount of minimum aid that comes to small districts.
Okay.
And this funding exists, this LEAF?
So the, we're trying to create the LEAF factor, um, so, um, when you put.
Oh, oh geez.
For F Y twenty or or after?
Um, it's probably going to go the route of the rural schools, so it may take a couple of years.
Okay.
Um, when we saw the foundation budget review committee's, um, proposal and what it meant for Granby, it is a substantial increase for Granby. It's a hundred and sixty-nine thousand nine hundred dollars, I believe, um, that would come to Granby as a result. Um, but that isn't the same as if we were getting benefited by increased, um, aid for E L students, special education students or healthcare benefits, so we're not qualifying under all of those categories which really are supporting the urban districts, um. And so we're looking at a different way to, um, garner some more support out of the foundation review committee's work. So two, that was a long answer to say, no, we're not gonna see it in F Y twenty, uh, my anticipation would be, it would be like the rural schools, it would be studied by D E S I in combination with the legislature, um, and it would be put forward in a bill, um, most likely, uh, as a revenue, uh, in F Y twenty-one.
Yeah, this is how it works.
This is how it works, mm-hmm.
Can we? I'm sure we will, but when is our town meeting? Uh.
May thirteenth, I wanna say, but I would have to check that.
I like where you're go- I know where you're going with this.
Well, what am, what is it?
More more, um, public information on this?
Yeah, and that with that narrative that we've been talking about. For instance, what increased the most compared or what increased, what declined compared to last year, um.
Mm-hmm.
The tier system, I think, is important.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
W- where are we?
I don't think many people know about that.
Right.
Yeah. Cause some of the things that you guys already shared with us, you know, whether it's alignment with the strategic plan or the increments coming from some of the la- la- uh, late decisions based on the uh tech audit, this and that. I don't know that there was, uh, really, um, a summary that brought all those together to say, here's how we align with our strategic plan, that's why we have these and here's how we align with this desire to become a technology-oriented, uh, school district. If we can pull all that together and create some narrative around that, it would make it a lot easier for folks to follow some of these changes.
Mm-hmm.
And I think there are some of the good things here that we still, I, in my mind, are not able to articulate as successfully as we should. And that is the fact that we are within this number despite the fact that there are a lot of good positive changes, uh, to, you know, to how we're looking at education. And that goes to the efficiencies, I mean, we had that slide, but, you know, efficiencies by itself may mean different things, how do we explain how we were able to really
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
get to a point, you know, in a short period of time, where we realize those savings and those savings were then used for uh purposes that align with the strategic plan and everything else.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so what, um. Do you have anything, are you gonna present or are we?
We certainly can, I mean.
Any change since the last time you presented to us, what are those changes?
Yeah, there there, I'm gonna say there would be. But I'd have to I'd have to be able to kind of put them into numbers and compare, um.
Okay.
Well, I mean, we could or we could just give a final presentation of the budget. You know, just a a a kind of similar to what we had on the first draft, but the final version of it or do some comparisons as to what we pre- presented originally and and where we are now, I mean, it doesn't.
To whom?
Hmm?
When and to whom?
To us.
You mean to the school committee?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, uh, we have all the information now and it's all, um, I've been kind of just putting some charts together, um. I did a comparison, it's in that spreadsheet, I I wouldn't suggest looking at it unless you download it actually into cons- um, Excel, but there's a a tab in there that's called function comp or funk comp, I just try to keep them short. Um, but it it goes all the way back to F Y fifteen and breaks, um, all of our expenses down by D E S I function code, which is how we have to report it on the end of year.
Yeah.
Um, which is a, um, a pretty good comparison, um, like I said, I've I've been putting some charts in there just to kind of illustrate illustrate the same information, you know, a little differently, um, depending on how some people like it. Um, but this pretty much for the most part is the final budget. You know, we might tweak some things here and there based on the the final appropriation for the, from the governor and and when we find out about grants and all that kind of stuff, but for the most part, as of right now, I would say this is, this is the complete budget and, um, I can put together any type of reports or presentations that you guys would like.
Well, the reason why I asked whether there was any change, we basically reviewed the latest version of it.
Mm-hmm.
And then we vote on that, I don't know that we had a conversation or presentation around the latest version of this budget, right?
We really haven't, no, well, no, because it it's updated as of today, so.
Yeah, so it basically doesn't allow us to have that conversation one last time before we approve it.
Mm-hmm.
Because, you know, this this is one of the big things that the school committee does, is approve the budget.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Um. Just, I'm gonna return to that, but just curious, on this tab that says, uh, function comp or something like that?
Yeah, it's supposed to be function comparison, yep.
Functional, yeah. Why is F Y nineteen that, or it's because you put something on top of?
Yeah, that's why I said don't, yeah, yeah, yep, yep.
Oh, okay. Okay.
If you look at it in the Excel version, I think the the chart that I was, um, that I created is overlapping the numbers there, yeah, it's overlapped, yep.
Oh, it is just. And I thought, I thought, you know, the other bars are so dramatically shorter.
Yeah. No, 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 yeah, it just, the way it downloads in, um,
Okay.
in the, in the cloud, it it overlaps.
So I guess where I'm going with this, um, it would be great for us to have a conversation, which would then mean that we would have the con- So I guess where I'm going with this, um, it would be great for us to have a conversation, which would then mean that we would have the conversation then vote, not now, but later. How do you guys feel about that?
Uh, later, when?
Um.
April twenty second?
April twenty second.
I won't be here.
I mean, you know, the.
Just FYI.
Yeah, I know, I I understand, thank you for reminding me. Um, cause this is our budget, we should really understand what changed and what isn't, what is not.
Mm-hmm.
It's our responsibility, so.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that's what I would suggest that we do. And if you don't agree with that, that's.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, what you would like is an update on any and all changes that were made from the time we presented to now.
Right.
So we will work on getting you that, um, and.
I remember, uh, not to interrupt, but last time when we saw it. Even the audit results, results were not in yet, right? So we just talked about it as a side item, but they were not in yet, so.
Right, okay, yep.
Mm-hmm.
So we'll outline that and um. What's today, Monday?
Today's. Um, sure, but um, I'm on a plane to vacation tomorrow night, um, but yes, I can certainly work on it, yeah, I mean.
Sure.
Yes, all joking aside, it's information that we already have, so we can.
We just have to pull it and put it into a document that just states very clearly what we did between the last time and now, and we'll get that to you.
Yeah, yeah. Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
I agree, if I'm reading that, I think it needs to be presented to the full committee.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Even though it.
Yeah. Can you Skype in? We are allowed to Skype.
We are, if somebody wants to Skype in. I don't know that anybody wants to Skype in for from vacation.
I'll have to think about that.
Yeah, think about it, otherwise, yes, we do have the allowance.
It would be our first Skype.
I know, and it's my last, this is my last budget to vote on.
Will we be good? Um, because will it just be the three of us then? Will we, are we still good for a quorum then?
Yeah.
Okay.
As long as everybody shows up.
Yeah. Because Jen is done, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah. All right, sorry for.
That's okay.
No, that's fine, that's.
I went for a while there.
No.
Yeah.
Like I said, we have the information, it's just kind of.
Yeah. Yeah.
Think a bullet, you know?
Getting it together, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and if, a- again, um, this week, I can't do anything about it. But if the data uh are clear enough.
Mm-hmm.
I can actually create some of the charts and all that stuff on the weekend and and help you guys with that. I have no problem with that. I just ha- don't have any time during the week this week.
Mm-hmm.
So let's see, um, I'll have to think about it, yeah.
About Skype?
Mm.
Okay, we have to clarify it then, if the, if it's uh even a remote possibility, we should clarify. There is actually an allowance for Skype, but, yeah.
There is an allowance for Skyping, yes.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
All right, so that makes that conversation a little shorter.
Mm-hmm.
I guess. Do you have a superintendent's report?
Do not.
You do not, okay. Uh, do you have anything else on FY nineteen or twenty?
I have FY nineteen, so um, again, I apologize that it's late, you know, I put it in this afternoon, it's just the the standard heater date. Um, comparison that I have been sharing, um, I don't believe we seen one of these in a few weeks. Um, but this is for the month of March, um, and we are exactly percentage wise, um. Percent of spending, we're exactly where we are, where we were last year. Um, but these next few months, um, not so much the rest of this month, but the beginning of May will be, um. Putting a lot of work into making sure we're liquidating purchase orders, um, we're gonna dive into um salary encumbrances over the summer. So we'll we'll have a real good gauge on the the surplus or deficit, I'm gonna use both those, um, that we'll we'll be facing, so. Um, but as of March from this year compared to last year, we're right on pace with spending.
Do you know what led to that catching up?
Um, we were about three to five percent behind, it was a three to five percent lag from, yeah, I I mean. N- nothing really jumps out, um, but I could certainly, I could get some details, um, I think.
Did we accelerate any of the uh, any of the run rates on any of the line items?
Um, no, the only thing really, we've had some, um. Some maintenance facilities costs that we didn't expect, we've had the boilers at the high school um go down. That needed some substantial um work done to them.
And you had the freezer thing.
The freezer went down, yeah, so we've had some unanticipated um costs that that probably closed that gap a little bit. But nothing really, nothing really jumps out.
Is this, is this um. Included in the scenario, various scenarios that you had, you know, whether or not we would have surplus and this and that.
Yes, yep. Mm-hmm.
And thi- thi- this this still works?
Yes, this is, yep, this is, yep.
All right.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, any questions?
And then also in there is a um.
Food services?
Food service, yep, chart wells update.
It's just, doesn't seem to work, these numbers.
Yeah, so for February, yep, for February, um. For February, there was um, one early dismissal days, two snow days and a half day in February. Which the impact, the total impact was five hundred less breakfasts and um over thirteen hundred lunches, less lunches. Um, and about a thousand dollars of à la carte sales that were missed, so. Their projection was about forty five hundred hours of missed sales due to those non-school days or non-service days. So with that said, um, again, we can, we can go through these numbers.
I'll just, uh.
Yeah, if, Mike, actually, if you wanna ask your question to that now, then.
Yeah, I just, I just look, I see, um, so the counts down the aside, right? Because there's a cost when you serve, you know, anyways, right?
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
So that is kind of what it is, but when you look at. Um. You know, the 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 food production cost was is still down three thousand dollars.
Mm-hmm.
The labor ca- cost is down, you know, uh, just under eight thousand. And then I don't know what this last one here is, but that's down twelve thousand.
The semi-variable costs?
Yeah.
Yeah, so there's the, there's a a couple of different numbers that go into, again, remember, this is, their budget is based on. Um, service days.
I have a question on that actually then, so.
Hmm?
We just said that there was less days because of the half day, snow days, whatever.
Mm-hmm.
So how is it our labor cost was over sixteen hundred dollars over? We have less time, less lunch, less everything, they shouldn't be working more.
Right, so so just, it's in comparison to their budget. So what they budgeted at the beginning of the year compared to what they actually spent.
Is it a month to month budget, though?
Um.
They got the annual stuff mixed in there too, but.
No, but that's, that's a good question.
It is, yes, it is, so, yes, it's 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 a service day per month budget, that's how they, that's how they do it. Um, so I I can forward, if you guys would like, I can forward their P and L statement, and I know, I believe you guys have received them in the past.
I'm just con- I'm just con-
No, it's a good question, it re- it really is, it it is. Um, and Ken and I actually will meet the week that I get back, we talked about these and then we'll meet, um. The week after vacation where we kinda dive into these a little more, um, but it's a, it's a great question, but it's a, it's. The actual compared to what they budget for the month.
Okay.
Um, and that's the the monthly, they're based on service days in the month.
Yeah, it just seems like everything else when we're talking about February is down, down, down.
Mm-hmm.
So. I. Ah, I'll give it up, I'll wait till you.
No, I know, that's good, it's it's, they're they're good questions, they're, and I feel like we always have kind of good conversation around, um, this summary.
I I just can't get my hands around how they can be down so much on one side, but we're still down year to date by six thousand dollars. Like I said, I said, do- do- doing the math, it's like twelve thousand for one, eight thousand for another, twenty two thousand dollars were under budget.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, we're we're in the hole six thousand.
So what I'll do, so I I get another monthly, it's not their, well, it's it's sort of their P and L, but it's it's kind of a more basic breakdown of, um. Their finances for the month, I can include that in this folder, if you guys wanna take a look at it, and I can include it going forward. Kinda breaks it down a little better, um. This, this really is intended to show us more of the details on the amount of lunches that they serve, the amount of breakfasts that they serve. I I see where the numbers, the actual numbers might get confusing, so I can talk with Ken and maybe we we kinda clean this up a little bit. And don't necessarily dive into the numbers in this summary at least, I can provide a summary on how many lunches they serve for the month, breakfast. What that equates to as revenue, and then I can include some other breakdown of the finances for the month, and maybe we can talk, you know, talk about it that way. This was more, when I asked Ken for this, it was more of just getting that information out there, um. For myself and for the committee to see what was going on, i- if if what they promised us for break even in this contract really was gonna come to fruition. Um, and that last bullet where it says FY nineteen year to date, so as of today or the end of February, we were, they were in the red by six thousand two hundred and forty two in total. You you take in all of these costs, all the meal counts, in total, they were in the deficit by six thousand two forty two. Compared to last year, at this point, it was almost, it was over thirty five thousand dollars.
Right, which kinda goes back to what I was saying, if they're down so much in other areas, how can we still be down?
Yep, and it, so obviously, it's month over month, so, um. It it's tough, right, cause we're looking at one month, but we're trying to, you know, prior months play into these numbers as well. Um, so I I don't know if I can. If you want me to, going forward, include the previous month or two months with the current month to take a look at, I'm I'm not, I'm not really sure.
I'm not sure that that's the, that's the real thing, and, you know, um, we always spend a lot of time on this. Because it doesn't make sense often, so year to date means until this point, this year, right?
This point, yep.
So when you look at those line items, if something says, we're we're good, we're better by three thousand dollars year to date for one, it's under, right?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, then seventy five hundred dollars for labor cost and twelve thousand dol- seven, yeah, twelve thousand dollars for semi-variable uh cost, right?
You're on that third from the bottom there, yep.
Yeah, so, yeah, net product labor and then uh semi-variable.
Yep, yep.
When you add those together, it just brings you to uh ten thousand five. Twenty two thousand five hundred dollars that they are saying, year to date, we are better compared to uh what we expected, right? Then you go to the last line, it says, well, you know, sorry, but, you know, it's six thousand dollars in the hole. I understand they're, you know, they're working on breaking even at the very least by the end of the year.
Mm-hmm.
But when we look at this in the absence of anything else and add those numbers together, it doesn't make any sense whatsoever. So the only thing that we can go by is that last line.
Mm-hmm.
Even the last line, last time, we had some discrepancy and they explained it to us, so the better these these numbers are. You know, the the shorter these convers- conversations could be and better educated we can be.
Mm-hmm. So.
Can I ask, um, do your conversations with them make sense? Do you walk away from them, from the these conversations with a clear idea, a clear sense of. How we're doing in this district with chart wells?
So I would say yes, for the most part, so I I see the, so I meet with our our treasurer every month too, so I see the revenue and the expenses that come in. So the this number here ties to what their actual account balance would have been at the end of February. When I meet with our town treasurer, when I meet with Ken and Mike, it's more going over the the P and L statement, making sure those numbers add up. Making sure we're getting food at the lowest costs. So so yes, they they make sense, um, but to be honest, I don't get into this detail with them every time we meet. Cause there's other things that we're we're talking about, so when I'm getting these reports from Ken, so when I get this report from Ken, I'll match it up to their profit. Profit and loss statement that they attach with their invoice, and these numbers are for the most part accurate.
So something is missing then in translation, because.
So.
Either, you know, cause I'm I'm looking at this and and saying same thing to myself.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we see under budget, under budget, and yet we're six thousand dollars in the hole and we can't. We can't grasp at how they're getting to these numbers and.
So, so. The question is, do we wanna move forward with this amount of information? Do we want food service, maybe now, cause we're getting close to the end of the year, once a month with us at the meeting to talk about them?
Uh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead, how do we, how do we want to handle that going forward?
I think there's value here, because I like to know where we stand all the time with where we were, thought we were supposed to be at this point, right?
To me.
I mean, that's really important, and where we were last year, maybe, I mean, that's all, really helps me determine if we're on the right path.
Yep.
At the same time, I think we do need to understand the, you know, the numbers as far as like the meals served, because that has an impact, you know, long term. You know, not maybe month, you know, each month, but over time, that does add up to the impact, right?
I would appreciate.
I just, I just need to make it make sense when I look at it.
I would appreciate them anticipating what our questions are gonna be. I don't think it's really that complicated.
Yeah, well.
You know, they should be able to look at this and say, okay, I know exactly what four questions they're gonna be asking.
Yeah.
I don't think we should have to ask those questions.
Every time, mm-hmm.
Yeah, maybe if there was a little line there saying, this is this, this is this, and oh, by the way, it looks like this because.
Yes.
Like a sub bullet underneath, you know?
We spend, we spend far too much time talking about this. It's in the, it's no different than, you know, what what we expect with our own budget, right?
Yeah, certainly.
I mean. Just explain to us, give us narrative around it, and then it's like, oh, okay, yeah, that makes sense. But they give us, you know, we're presented with this and it's just like head scratching.
And just because I have to be a dead horse, I'm sorry. So the net product cost was down three thousand dollars from their budget because of the less service time.
Not necessarily, so they could've, they could've purchased things at a cheaper price, they could've got more commodities, I don't go based on the. Less service days, meaning the product cost was down.
So they, well, cause they would, they would have to buy less food, right?
Well, they're not buying, so they they, yeah, they they have inventory, so it's it's it's, they're they're not directly related.
Especially on the snow days, they do might have planned to be there that.
Yeah, now, see, that's the problem, you shouldn't, you shouldn't be having to overthink this, right?
Right, well, cause I'm just hung up that.
That's what I mean.
So you're leading off with, we have less time, which I get, I totally understand that. With the way the calendar works and the, uh, you know, we could have a monsoon and miss three days and it's all the way things are going, right? So, so I get it, like, there's things that are beyond their control, but if we start off with, we are less than. What was expected.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know, what, I just keep coming.
Keep going, no, keep going.
There has, these numbers that they're giving to us tie back to the less than, because if for some reason we, I don't know. Were suddenly making up time in April because of what we had to do years ago with, making up time because of incredible amount of snow days. And we added time to the calendar, we would be more than, and you would expect that to have a an negative impact on the budget, because we've spent more. I just can't get my train of thought around how, if we are less than, and we've been less than, so we should be under what we had expected to purchase, that. Like everyone else has said, wh- why are we still in the red?
Here's what might help. If they were to show the budget numbers.
Mm-hmm.
You know, you have a table, it says, here's the budget by the state where we're, you know, where we're gonna see these numbers, and then suddenly, you know, the. We are under budget, under budget, under budget, then maybe adding some of the numbers, we may get to this, but the way we are reading it. It it doesn't add up, and that's why we're having these conversations, and I I have to say that each time we're basically walking away without having understood what it really means.
Head scratching is the word of the night for that.
I'm going to put the most, and we don't have to look at it now, but what I'll do is I'll put the most. Um, current P and L statement that I have from them into this folder.
'Cause accounts are accounts, accounts are, in fact, from our perspective, accounts are not even material.
Doesn't matter.
Yeah, exactly, a budget, you have all the dollars, by this, uh, date, I expected to spend this much money, that's why I planned in my budget to sp- you know, to have spent this much money.
Mm-hmm.
Instead, here's the real number that we are seeing, the difference should be as simple as subtraction for us to determine whether we're under or over.
I do like to see the counts though, I wouldn't want that, 'cause it's, it is interesting to see, you know, especially with the lunches and the half-day lunches and stuff.
Yeah, the counts help us understand what the impact of those off-days, snow days, half-days, the, the, you know, that, that's, that's what that helps for. Are we good?
Yeah.
Okay. Was there a, uh?
Yeah, I don't wanna spend more and more second on this, I really don't.
Was there a collaborative meeting?
There was. Um, so we, um, voted on a, a new member, or actually, an old member that wants to come back. Ga- 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 gateway, um, is now going to be part of the collaborative again.
Oh, okay, I didn't realize that they had left permanently.
Um, they did.
Okay.
Um, there was also, and you were probably at this, it was part of the superintendent with the, um, state meeting. I don't know if you saw it, it was she, I thought it was really interesting. The biggest push now, or a pu- push, I can't say the biggest, but what they wa- wanna focus, so ti- time on now is not just, um, the, the, is that the fo- fo- formula, it's the it's the under, uh, payment on all the other things. And, uh, somebody from North, North Hampton went through and pu- put together a spreadsheet showing what, um, each town is out, because they don't fill the circuit breaker and things like that. An art cut is about, a- about eighty-five thousand. On top of the one sixty-five, I think they said that we would get with the new budget, so you add those two together, and it's almost so, so you can do that, Matt. Um, the other big thing that we spoke about was Bill's.
Do, do you mind if I ask a question on that one? What actions do we need to take to not to lose eighty-five? What, what, what is, what does it mean to us?
That's, that's all about speaking with the state people again, uh, you know, the.
Okay, sounds something that we do not do, or we can't do, it's, we need to reach out and tell them to do, okay.
That's really what it all is about, it's, um, and the biggest part of the night was spent on, it's, um, the, 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 Bill's turn for his evaluation. So he was go- going through his whole thing about that. Um, I did leave, uh, the, the report out in the share drivers, uh, at this time. For those folks that wanna read through it, but that was a, that was about all that.
Oh, okay.
Which one is that?
Uh, that meeting was about.
Cool.
Just trying to think, yeah, that, yeah, 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 that is about it. I just, I, I just can sh- sh- share, share, share this if anybody wants to take a look, if I was really interested in that.
Yeah, that would be great to see, yeah, thank you for bringing that. Any questions for Mike? Alright. Do, do they still have the superintendent sessions and dinners and all that?
Uh.
I don't know about the dinners.
Well, I mean, if, if it was, you know, they were asked, they were inviting everybody for dinner, but then it was turned into a working session, and everybody was exchanging ideas and best practices and all that.
I don't know, we, I mean, we meet, um, once a month in the morning with the superintendents, it's the executive board of CES. So we're doing that, um, but we, we don't typically meet with, um, school committee members at that time. So is that a meeting that you were talking?
No, this was all superintendents, before we got there, they would meet, yeah.
Oh, okay. Oh, okay. Yep, so we're meeting once a month, as a matter of fact, Friday is the day.
Cool. Alright, um, I don't think any of the other committees had any, uh, subcommittees had any meetings. One quick question, you have an article here on feedback.
I did, I just put it in there.
Yeah, was there?
It was a very, it was a very good article.
Nope, no, I just. Yeah.
And I took a lot of mental notes on that.
It was, it was an interesting article, it basically made me think the other way, in fact, uh,
Of course.
Yeah, uh, I, I actually, I would like to see their book to see whether or not this was, as somebody said in the comments, a teaser, and they, there wasn't.
They actually came out of CES.
You know, pardon me?
It was, it was shared by a C, a CES person who was working with our, um, collaborative folks, teachers, um, that were, um, participating, I believe, in, um, our trauma-sensitive informed classroom training, um, and how do you give and receive feedback?
Yeah.
And what that means, yeah.
And it was actually, um, it was a follow-up to an article that I just read recent, recently in the New York Times.
That you shared. I think you shared it, didn't you, in the?
About feedback, no, specifically about feedback and the pitfalls of feedback, because everybody, again, is looking through their own lens, and it's like, well, whose feedback is relevant? You're not, I, I don't know, it, I think it made, it, it made me think, anyway.
No, it was, it was interesting, it made me think.
Well, and, you know, when you talk about building capacity in teachers, we have an inherent desire to have everyone feel good, so we might say things like, I really liked da-da-da-da-da-da, or, um, it was really nice that you did da-da-da-da-da, when we're in classrooms, and helping people understand that effective feedback is really about seeing what the teacher or an administrator may not be seeing, because they're engaged, so you may say something like, um, when you redirected, um, a student, um, back to task, um, I noticed that the student then finished, you know, six out of the next seven, um, questions, um, without you having to come back again, um, I noticed that your, your tone and, you know, all of these other teacher moves that we might use was very effective. And the result was a student behavior, a change in student behavior, that's what we need to get really good at in terms of feedback.
And also personalizing it, you know, when I saw you do this, I felt, or I had this reaction, or I noticed inside myself.
Mm-hmm, it made me wonder, I, in those conversations, we don't often have enough time to even have, so building that into how we look at student work, how we talk about our practice, that's all year two, three from now, but it's exciting.
Yeah, I think that, uh, at least the way I read it, I think they either misunderstood or missed some aspects of good feedback, the biggest one is something that we talked about at the beginning of this evening, related to culture. Best feedback is given in, in a culture that actually knows to accept it and use it
Yes.
in the best way possible.
Yup.
So, you know, in pla- many places that I work, people were proactively asking for feedback. And they were not taking it personally, they were actually thinking that that was truly something that was given to them with the best intent. Were they always, you know, hey, you know, you've done a great job? No, but they knew that, that wa- it wasn't coming from a bad place, even when there was some constructive, uh, elements to it. So I didn't, maybe I missed some, some things, I, I read it Sunday morning, um, but I'm, I'm glad that we're having these conversations, because this is gonna become very important for us as we try to change the culture, and it's not just with, uh, teaching the students how to give and receive, but also all of us
Yes.
giving and receiving. Uh, honestly, even this whole, uh, exchange around our budget that, you know, we, we had, everybody, you know, just contributing to the conversation, giving suggestions, giving feedback, that, you know, this works, that doesn't work. That's not necessarily pure feedback, but us getting to the point where we accept and understand and value the information shared with us, that's a good start. And, uh, hopefully we do, we do a lot more, more of that. Uh, and it would be part of our conversation if we ever get to that, uh, uh, continuous improvement PD.
Yes, I have to go back to them because of your dates.
Alright, so I believe that's all we had for our open session, so what we're gonna do, we will vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty-One, Part A Three, to discuss strategy with regard to collective bargaining, as doing so in an open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the committee. The committee will not return to open session. Do we have anyone to do a roll call?
I have something for the next agenda too.
Oh, okay, hold on, one second.
Yes.
Just the roof?
Yes.
Oh, roof, is that what you said?
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you for reminding me, um, so they are down to their, um,
Sorry, I'm ready, I just wanted to.
No, no, good.
No, it's good, thank you, they are down to their last four, um,
Design?
Designers.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they are going to, um, interview and then suggest the final two to select board. So when I talked to Steve Nally today, um, they're hoping that they'll get in front of select board, um, within the next few weeks, they'll negotiate out, negotiate out who's gonna be the design vendor, get all the schematics, and then the actual, um, the actual bid will go out, um, so we're about a month or so out from the bid going out. Um, and then it's another two weeks from there, um, so as of right now, we are on track for the construction to start around the time that was, um, outlined, which is the first week of July.
Okay.
That can change, might change, um, but so far we are on track, according to Steve Nally, and, uh, he's the chair of the, the roof committee, so, um,
Cool.
Thank you, thank you for reminding me.
Yeah.
So does that start part of the bid? Does that start time part of the bid, 'cause I, I get concerned, like, I don't know about you, but when I hear somebody to do work, it's like, well, you gotta wait three weeks now, because I just got these other jobs.
So, I don't know, 'cause I'm not on the committee, but I do know that Steve Nally told me that one of their questions to the final two is going to be, based on this timeline, how long is it gonna take you to get the design back? And then from there, how long the bid process takes will get us closer as to what, when that start date is, but that start date of the first week of July would be the actual start of repair, whatever, construction of the roof.
I just got scared, 'cause if you miss it by this much, then all of a sudden, they're still working on it when kids are starting to come back to school, right?
Yup, yup, um, again, I don't wanna speak, 'cause I'm not on the committee, but.
Steve's on the committee, I mean, Steve Sullivan.
Steve Sullivan, yup, yup, and the only reason Steve Nally told me today, 'cause actually, I met with him today. Um, we had our monthly meeting today, and he said, if, at school committee, they asked, this is where we're at with the roof project, so all in all, they are on pace for the start of the first week of July for construction, yeah.
Good. Alright, so with that, we have that uh, motion to enter into executive session.
Do you roll call?
Please.
Mr. Ever.
Aye.
Ms. Painkowski?
Aye.
Ms. Bartos?
Aye.
Mr. Simpson?
Aye.
Alright, thank you, and have a good evening.